Good morning. It is 10:00 a.m. on October 11, 2022. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberative, and just for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Headends.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comments, step forward to the table or raise. Seeing no one come forward, we will close public comment number one and move to consideration of proclamation of October as National Community Planning Month. Supervisor Headends, would you like to start?
Sure. Community Planning Month, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation.
And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Story County and.
Whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of Story County of Iowa and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the month of October 2022 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in Story County of Iowa in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Adopted this 11th day of October 2022, I move the resolution.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headends.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
And I believe we have members of our community development department who would like to get a picture.
Super. I also want to make one brief comment. I really, come on up while I'm talking, that's okay. I just want to thank our volunteers, and I know they're included in the proclamation, but on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Adjustment, we could not do this work without the many volunteers who help our paid staff.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Next, we have consideration of proclamation recognizing October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Supervisor Merkin, did you want to start?
Whereas home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security. And for most of us, home and family can indeed be counted among our greatest blessings. Tragically, for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas every nine seconds, a woman in the United States is assaulted by an intimate partner, and an average of three women are murdered by intimate partners in the United States every day. And a person experiencing strangulation in a relationship is seven times more likely to be murdered by their partner. And according to the American Psychological Association, the presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide by 500%.
And whereas, according to the Bureau of Justice Statistics Crime Data Brief, intimate partner violence, women accounted for 85% of the victims of intimate partner violence, men for approximately 15%. And whereas women and men are not the only targets, children, the elderly, family pets, and responding law enforcement officers are counted among the victims. And whereas, according to the National Resource Center on Domestic Violence, approximately 23% of LGBTQ men and 50% of LGBTQ women experience abuse at the hands of their intimate partners and.
Whereas domestic violence costs an estimated $8.3 billion annually in medical care, mental health services, and lost productivity on the job. Women, men, and children living with domestic violence suffer higher rates of physical injuries, chronic health problems, depression, PTSD, attempted suicide, substance abuse, behavior problems for children, and homelessness. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge our citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence and supporting those who are working towards its end. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Headends.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now we have a presentation on the Drainage Association member. Good morning. Yes, please step forward to the table.
Just need to turn this.
Yeah, and if you could make sure that the mic is turned on. Do you have a presentation that's going to be on the screen by any chance? Like a PowerPoint? Okay.
Do you just send the attachments?
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, good morning. I'm John Torbett, Executive Director of the Iowa Drainage District Association. And it's a pleasure to be before you today and to visit with you about the association. I think this is sort of an outgrowth of a meeting that some of all of you, an ISAC meeting that some of all of you may have attended several weeks ago where the proposed carbon pipelines were discussed. And our attorney gave a presentation at that meeting and talked about a resolution, or actually two resolutions that we had developed for our membership so that if you were in a situation where one of these pipelines was coming through, you did have the means at your disposal to protect your drainage infrastructure. And some of the background of that, that proposal actually started out several years ago with Dakota Access Pipeline. And we had some counties that requested that we draft something. I think at that time, the Dakota Access people were surprised to find out how much authority Drainage Districts had to protect ourselves. And we had some rather contentious meetings, but in the end, they ended up accepting the kinds of things that we were trying to do and ended up working with us with respect to that resolution. So that was used by several counties back in the Dakota Access days. And then since then, we've had requests to broaden the resolution so that it talked about other situations. And I think the one that was mentioned most commonly was wind turbines. And again, when these are going on the land, there is the potential impact for drainage infrastructure, and we want to make sure that's protected. Also, high-capacity transmission lines. So we've broadened the wording to encompass those sort of events. And I have to admit that when I got the request to share the resolution, I had to think about it because this is something that's been developed with member dollars. And we've spent a lot of money on it, and it's gone through a lot of iterations. But I figured you're going to get it anyway, one way or the other. And in the end, you know, what we're trying to do is protect drainage infrastructure, and if this can help you all in doing this, then I feel good about that. And I ended up thinking this would be a good example of the Story County of the kinds of services that we provide and the kind of services that we're capable of. So that's one example. Another thing I mentioned briefly that you may have an interest in is IDDA is involved in a grant process, a federal grant through NRCS with the Ag Water Alliance, which is a group that, sort of a subgroup with the Iowa Soybean Association. And what the purpose of that grant is to promote what is called conservation drainage. And how that works with respect to you all, if you have a drainage improvement now, for the most part, what happens with improvements is bigger mains get put in. So you can take more water and move more water off the land more quickly. What Conservation Drainage says is that as long as we're redesigning and replumbing the landscape, maybe we can do so in such a way that it's more environmentally friendly. And maybe as part of that redesign, we can build conservation practices into that redesign. Now, the rub of that is that you all, as drainage trustees, do not have the authority under state law to assess for conservation practices. You can't do that. You, when you're acting as county supervisors, you have home rule, and you can do things that aren't outlined in the code. When you're acting as drainage trustees, you don't. So there has to be a specific grant of authority there to bill your landowners for certain kinds of things, and water quality and conservation practices are not among those. So how do you do this? How can we then have an improvement and build a water conservation practice? And well, what we're doing under this grant is the grant's going to pay for those practices. And a good example of this, we have a county over west of here that is doing a million-dollar-plus improvement. And as part of that improvement, they're incorporating a water quality, water treatment, wetland. Captures tile water, holds it by the process of holding the water at denitrified. That wetland is going to be paid for by IDALs. But it'll be all under the same drainage improvement. So that's a kind of example of how this might work. So I have long, I've been director now for more than 20 years, and I've told our membership since day one that the days of drainage districts only being in existence to drain water are not going to last forever. And we have to look at what we do in a more holistic sense and in a more environmental sense, and recognizing that drainage has a lot of benefits. It also has some environmental problems associated with it, all of which are solvable, given the will and the right combination of things happening. So that's sort of what we're about. I would love to have you all as a member, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Ken, John, thank you for this information. This is very useful, and I want to thank you for sharing that resolution with us, even though we weren't members. And I really appreciated that. And that's why I wanted you to come here and talk to us about the association. Can you tell us some of the things, the most common kind of ways you're assisting counties, or some examples of specifically, you know, what questions you get from your customers and how you're able to help them?
What kind of questions I get from members?
Yeah. How have you been able, say, the last year to assist counties?
I would say that most of the questions that come my way are, for lack of a better term, legal questions. How do we do this? Where in drainage law do I find this? Here's the situation I have, what part of drainage statutes address that situation? Sometimes we'll get a request and say, you know, what are other counties doing about this? Or counties face that, and we'll put out, you know, an email and ask that question and see what else might be going on with respect to that certain issue. But I would say in most cases, they're questions about drainage law and how to use drainage law. Drainage law is complicated, and you know, there's, I've been doing this 20 years. I still come across things that I, where the heck is that? I have no idea. That's why we have a legal counsel.
How many counties do you have as part of your membership?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, and how long have they been part of your organization?
That list moves a little bit. And we have some counties that come in, and we have some counties that go out. And there are some counties that have been members since I was Executive Director. We know that they're going to be a member, they're always going to be there. They're the stalwarts. We have some counties that sort of go back and forth depending on politics in the Board of Supervisors, depending on their financial situation, depending on a lot of different issues. So that's sort of a moving target. We do our best to have as many counties in our membership, obviously, as possible, but you know, it's just not always feasible to do that.
Can you remind us of how many counties have drainage districts in Iowa?
It's in the upper 30s.
Upper 30s?
Yeah.
I was thinking it was around 40. Okay.
Some of those are going to be really minor. But if they have one drainage district, I'm putting them on that list. And you know, we have some counties too that have trustee-run districts, which is a district that's run by people elected by the members of the district. And we do have some trustee districts that are members.
We don't have any right now. You said a lot of your questions are legal. Looking at the invoice, you've got a regular dues that would be $37.50 for us, and then mutual protection, which is additional $15.62. Can you, if we were to call, if we just did the basic membership, and we were to call you and we had a legal question, would that mean you couldn't, you wouldn't answer that because we hadn't done the mutual protector?
No. Mutual Protection Fund is an optional fund.
Okay.
That's a long-term analogy for saying litigation fund.
It's a what fund?
Litigation fund.
Oh.
And what that fund gives us the ability to do, first of all, is hire a legal counsel. And secondly, to become involved in court cases that we potentially see as having a detrimental impact on drainage. And there have been probably five cases like that since I became Executive Director that have ended up in either federal court or state Supreme Court that we have intervened in on behalf of our membership. We generally do that through a friend of the court brief.
You do it through what?
In the form of a court brief.
Friend of the court.
Okay, so there's usually a primary counsel that the Drainage District Trustees have, and you do it as friend of the court? Okay, got it.
So we would love to have you do both, but membership entitles you to me and everything that comes with it. And the Mutual Protection Fund is an optional fund that, like I said, has a legal orientation.
And you lobby?
Do I lobby?
Do you lobby? You're registered as a lobbyist, correct?
Yes.
So you're watching out during legislative sessions as to whether there's any changes in proposed?
I am registered lobby. Doug Striker is our legal counsel, also does some lobbying on our behalf. And Mona Bond is a contract lobbyist who also works on behalf of the organization. I found out a long time ago that to be an effective lobbyist, you pretty much got to be there every day. And I just don't have the ability to do that as sole employee. So that's where we contract some of that up. I'm available if need be, and obviously I monitor what's going on and speak with our lobbying people as often as I need to speak to them. But I don't do that much of it personally. I leave it to the pros.
I really like what you were saying about this Ag Water Alliance with Soybean Association, and we have been involved in some IDALs wetland projects.
Yes.
But I can see where, yeah, I've thought about, you know, if IDALs is paying all of it, that's good, but maybe that's not going to be forever. I don't know. Do you know if NRCS monies can be used or any USDA monies?
Yes, can.
Yes, they can. Well, I think that's something we really could, information we could take advantage of because it's one of the things I think about whenever we meet as Drainage District Trustees is, what is, yeah, we're following the drainage law here, but what more could we be doing to protect water quality?
Yeah, I would point out that another thing we've done, and we've done this since 2006, that we have a contract with IDALs for the CREP program. The CREP program is where they use state and federal money to go out and build water treatment wetlands. And through this contract that we have with them, we actually provide the staff, essentially the marketing staff for that program. So when IDALs identifies the site and said, this would be a good place for a wetland, you're going to build that wetland, you've got to get easements from the landowners. So you've got to have somebody go talk to the landowners. And that's where our people come in. So we have five people now that work on a part-time basis that work directly with landowners to get easements for water quality wetlands. They also act as quality control if there's a construction process and also quality control after the wetland is actually built.
That's very interesting.
Like I said, we'd love to have you, and I appreciate being able to visit with you all today.
Any questions?
I have no more questions.
Not at this time, I don't. I may later and give you a call then. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to be here. Yep.
And thank you so much.
Okay, have a great day.
Next, we have consideration of minutes from October 4, 2022. Wait, don't we have agency report? No. No.
No.
Agency report is not there, is not on the current, no.
Oh, did you? Okay, I guess I didn't print off the most current one. Thank you.
I move approval of minutes from 10:42.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headends.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consideration of claims from October 13, before October 13.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Headends.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Moving to consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headends.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now we have public hearing items. Consideration of McFarland Lake Restoration Project Final Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Authorization to Release Bid. Good morning.
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 Just going to ask you if want to face the mic, whoever is speaking, just be, it'll pick up better. Thanks.
Well, I guess exciting opportunity for us. It's nice to be at a situation where we can consider moving forward after with McFarland Lake renovation after several years of renovation work analysis and et cetera. So today, we're asking for your consideration of plans, specifications, et cetera, to move forward with releasing an invitation for bid on renovation of the lake. We have been working on this for a number of years. We've worked with the university on watershed assessments and management plans, identify the problems or the sources of the issues with the lake. And so that's been done over the years. And then of late, contracted with Shire Hattery to do the design. The design team has consisted of Ryan Weemold, other staff at Conservation, myself, and in addition to the engineers, and then Iowa Department of Natural Resources biologists have been a party to it as well. So it's a joint effort moving forward with design. Normally on lake renovations, if it's a large enough lake, then the Department of Natural Resources can take a lead. Our lake, the McFarland Lake, does not qualify for that. So we need to lead on restoration efforts. So it's exciting. I think you'll like what you hear in the plans. And I'm going to have Ryan kind of take you through what's involved in the plans.
Sure. Thanks, Mike. So McFarland Lake is still in its original state, so it's over 50 years old. Typical Iowa impounded lake, the healthy average lifespan is around 30 years. So we're well past that. As previously identified through data collection, water quality testing, we've identified phosphorus and sediment as the main issues to the negative or to the poor health of the overall lake, as well as unsteady populations of fish. So carp being the main fish in there, that's causing us some problems with sedimentation issues. So to address that, we are going to be installing two retention basins, one dry along I-35. And then the wet one is also on the east there. I'll just point those out real quick. This will be a dry sediment basin here, which will grab water from this area across the interstate and draw sediment nutrients. Once it reaches a certain elevation, it will get. So those two series of retention basins should help improve the water quality of that lake, as well as removing sediment from the lake and deepening it. So around 45,000 cubic yards of sediment will remove from the lake. We'll also be using this opportunity to replace the drawdown structure with one that we can address any future maintenance issues as needed. So it'll have a sluice gate in it. So we'll actually have the ability to draw the lake down in the future if we need to address any other issues, whether it be fishery or sometimes they draw them down slightly to improve plant growth along the outside to add more oxygen to your water system. So as far as the lake restoration goes, one of the main improvements will be just the various fishing improvements. So we'll add a bunch of new fish structure to the bed of the lake, redo the actual fishery, encouraging healthy and diverse fishing populations. We'll be adding several fishing nodes and jetties and improve shoreline access for anglers. Mike pointed out some of those there. Through dangling experience, that's one of the main. Because it's also be adding a kayak and canoe launch area there nearest to the parking lot. So paddling has really been off. We wanted to provide a more stable footing for users to get in and access the water there, as well as our environmental education programming when they do pond study and things like that. It's nice for them to have stable footing when they are getting people down to the water's edge and in the water. So also featured will be accessibility improvement. So there will be an ADA trail along the lakeshore front that will go by that canoe access and head out to the jetty there, if Mike wants to point that out. Yep. So again, our goal is to get people close to the water, connect to the water, and get invested in water quality moving forward. So for this project, we have budgeted $800,000 out of the general fund and identified $400,000 out of our conservation reserve. The construction total with contingency for this project is right at $1.25 million. As far as grants, we have sought out grant funding from IDALs for roughly $100,000. We're still waiting to hear on that. And then we will also be pursuing a fish habitat grant for $60,000. So with that, I think we're, yep, construction total. Sorry.
Yeah, and one thing of note, it's a little bit different with this project than some of the ones. Normally, when we go. Normally, when we go to bid, we like to have a ten percent contingency. This time we have fifteen percent. So that's a little bit higher. So the construction total excluding contingency is, is the cost opinion is almost one point one million. So we've got a hundred and sixty-three thousand in contingency. And as of this morning, Idols is very interested in in moving forward with the, with a grant. Uh, and so that's looks very favorable, uh, in the, in the nature of a hundred thousand. We need to iron out that amount. But it looks like we'll, we'll receive that amount of funding.
The canoe and kayak launch, is that going to be accessible similar to the, the one that they just put out at Ada Haven?
No, it won't. So this is a different type of, uh, I guess, structure. This is more of in a shallow underwater bench. So you can stand and directly access your canoe. It is not like an above-ground dock.
Gotcha.
And that's, not that we're not interested in that, uh, that's a very expensive option. So, uh, we did not seek that solution for this access point currently.
Is there another location that it could, like down the line, like after the restoration is done?
Like similar to the one that's at Ada Haven? Um, potentially, uh, I'm not sure if this site would be, I would, I would recommend a place like Hickory Grove or something that gets that higher use for that, um, large of a apparatus, also with the cost being so expensive. We'd wanna maximize the use there.
Gotcha.
One of the major impediments over the years to more canoe and kayak use here is the, the slope uh, on the banks. And so it's very difficult. It's very steep and then it drops off even steeper once you hit water's edge. So it's very difficult to get uh, any kind of small canoe or kayak in, in the lake. Um, and so that's difficult for us too, when we try to do, um, school groups and and do lake discovery, pond discovery type programs. And and that, that gets a little difficult. So this canoe and kayak launch is a zero entry. So we'll have kind of a gravel substrate there and it's a zero entry. So it's, it's a real gradual ramp, if you will, that, that folks can get out into the water with no drop off. So um, so that we're excited about that. We think that that will be very well received.
You asked my question.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good.
Supervisor Merkin, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to ask any questions or make any comments for the public hearing, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing nobody step forward for a comment on public hearing, we'll close public. Close the public hearing and any other comments or questions before? Okay, I would entertain a motion on, uh, consideration of McFarland Lake Restoration Project Final Plan Specifications, Form of Contract and Authorization to Release Bid.
Uh, I move approval of the McFarland Lake Restoration Project Final Plan Specifications, Form of Contract and Authorization to Release Bid.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Edens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good work.
Excited to see it move forward. Moving to additional items, we have consideration of resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two appropriations amendment. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning.
Morning.
So at the beginning of the fiscal year, you appropriated fifty percent of everybody's budget. And then we amended the budget, so we appropriated those dollars. And now I am putting in front of you the resolution to appropriate the remaining fifty percent for all departments. Uh, we're only a quarter into the year, but I find that a lot of times it's better just to get it appropriated. So I don't have to worry about whether some
Have no questions.
I do not have any questions. I don't have any questions. Okay.
We get back to the resolution.
I understand you.
Oh, I'm, I'm just talking to myself.
Okay.
Okay, ready for motion?
Yes.
Okay, I had funded the number. I was scrolling through the agenda.
Okay.
I move approval of resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two appropriations amendment for
Second. Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of purchasing a Maverick Tile Finder system for six thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars unbudgeted. Morning again.
Good morning.
Morning again.
Hi, Sarah.
Yeah, it's like, uh, this is another, um, another evidence of success with our programs. As you know, we embarked on, uh, starting a quote-unquote edge of field project this year. And have been hitting that project has been wildly successful. So, um, Sarah has done quite a bit in working with our partners on that uh, and doing some survey work and coordinating that. So we found out that this is a pretty important tool and, uh, one that, that Sarah has kind of beat the bushes with our partners and got some other support for it. So let Sarah describe what we're asking for.
Yeah, so this system allows us to, um, survey the tile of where the edge of field conservation practice would go. Um, it's a, it's a necessary tool. Um, we realized when we were surveying in the spring that the one Maverick system that we were borrowing from NRCS, um, it's shared between four different counties. Uh, we are also borrowing, uh, a system from Webster. And we didn't get to survey as many tiles as we were hoping for, um, this spring. So we're planning on going out this fall, um, to do some survey work. Um, so we will borrow the NRCS, uh, system if, uh, we don't have ours in um, in by then. Um, but I was able to work with Soil and Water Conservation District. They have, um, approved one thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars to the purchase um, because they understand, um, the importance of this project. There's also a Idols South Skunk Watershed Coordinator, and so she will, um, we're both working on this project. Um, and then also the City of Ames is a great partner and is willing half of the rest of the, of the system. So split between three partners.
Can you explain how this, how this works?
Yeah, so it's about this tall. Um, it's six hundred feet of this like copper wire, um, that's of course wrapped in, um, a, a material. So we, we haul this system out, um, on a UTV and, uh, we kind of start in the stream bed wherever the tile is and we uh, run it up the tile into the farm field. Um, and then we take a kind of magnetic wand that identifies the depth of the tile. Um, so we need the elevation and the location of, of the tile. Because in order to put in the conservation practice, we have to trench or dig. Um, so we need to be able to know the depth of it.
Interesting. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. And we, uh, we run it up about, we need at least two hundred feet. Um, so sometimes you get stuck, but, uh, the goal is to get it that far.
I appreciate the work that you did for outreach.
Yeah.
To get kind of all the partners together on this.
Yeah, and, um, SWCD, um, they have a limited budget. Uh, and I think the majority of what they funded last year went to, um, waterworks. Um, so they were able to kind of look at their budget and realize that they could kind of split some of that money. Still have, um, waterworks go into schools, but also fund, uh, the purchase of this.
Um, I had a question. So when you said you weren't able to get as many surveyed as you were hoping to in the spring, is that because you were having to borrow the equipment and share it with others and?
Yeah, our resources were limited. Um, and yeah, that was the limiting factor.
So had you had it, you could have gotten a lot more done.
Yes.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, I reiterate what supervisor hadn't said. Um, appreciate all the work that you're doing with, with all the partners and, and keeping, keeping the conversation cooperative and moving forward. So thank you.
One other thing, uh, one other thing we'll note on this is that the conservation board last night approved this, made that recommendation to the board. Um, and the funds that we're anticipating using for this, for our portion of it um, would come from donations. So that's, there's no taxpayer, um, funding going into this. It's all from donations toward water quality.
All of that, the collaboration with the partners and the fact that you have these donation means it means that people really want to see water quality improvements and are willing to step up to the plate and work together. So I'm real glad to see that. Thank you. And Sarah, thanks for everything you're doing.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I move approval of the purchase of a Maverick Tile Finder system for the total of six thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars, of which Story County would be responsible for two thousand four hundred forty-four dollars and fifty cents coming from donation.
Second. Moved and seconded, Edens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have discussion and consideration of ISAC, ISAC's request for six hundred dollars to fund a study of technical evaluation by Iowa State.
Yeah, I first heard about this project a while ago from Evan DeValle, who, um, is the person that we're probably gonna have as our county inspector for the pipeline. And he was, he, we were talking about the administrative code and the fact that the ag mitigation standards and the particularly working in what conditions that the IUB's current administrative rules really weren't adequate. And, um, then he had discovered this person at Iowa State who is working, who looked at the Dakota Access, looked through that and, um, basically, um, has some good statistics, I think, on the soil compactions happened then. What the professor wants to do and, but needs some funding for is to do a project that would, um, have, have better, better, um, a better way of determining when you can work safely in wet conditions if you're doing pipeline or could apply to other construction as well. So the attachment B is the justification and the rationale for the study. And this was discussed, um, when, when I was down at the ISAC conference, I was talking with people about that, talked with, um, Bill Peterson about it. You know, I said, you know, it seems like a lot of counties would be interested in helping fund this, this. So he talked to the ISAC's board and the ISAC board. And they sent out the proposal and we're asking that counties consider contributing six hundred dollars, I believe through ISAC for this, for this research. It says that the research, the reporting of it, final reporting will be done next June. I don't know if that's in time considering the latest summit, uh, schedule I saw, but that at least that they're proposing. But I've also seen objections to that one. So it, it might be that the IUB would revise after, after getting this, could revise their administrative rules for summit. But if not, I'm sure it would apply to Navigator. And the other thing is there are a lot of pipelines. There will continue to be more pipelines. As John Torbert said, there will continue to be more wind turbines, all of these things that have, construction has impact on ag land. So I think not just for the current carbon sequestration pipelines, but for the other pipelines that will be coming through. I think this will be good information to have and for the IUB to have and for us to lobby with them to strengthen their rules. So that's what I know about it. Um, I'm not an expert on the, um, I'm not an expert on the research. That's why I asked that they get us information on, you know, so everybody could read that and I wouldn't have to explain it all. So I'll try to answer questions, but I'm not sure.
No, that's fine. And I just didn't get a chance to, uh, reach out to ISAC. Do you happen to know how many counties have already passed this? I
I don't.
Don't, yeah.
I don't. I haven't.
I know it was new because we all got the letter like a week ago. So
Yeah.
A lot of them are putting it on their agenda.
It's probably gonna be in the next few weeks that people boards will look at it. But now I wanted to get it on right away because I thought it was something that was important and didn't want to let it sit.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing it forward at yeah, because I, I missed that last day or so as of COVID, so didn't have the opportunity to be in any of those presentations.
Lot of good information.
Yeah, yeah. I know that, um, this is an issue that continually comes up. So it would be good to have more information. Any, yeah, there are any questions?
Ready for motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would, uh, move that we approve the ISAC, ISAC's request for six hundred to help fund a study of technical valuation by Iowa State University to determine a procedure for determining soil wetlands wetness during construction of underground utilities to minimize excessive soil compaction on farmed soils.
Second. Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you for bringing that forward again. Next, we have consideration of award of contract to Butches Construction for repairs at twenty-eight oh nine South Riverside by Park Ranger Residence, unbudgeted.
Well, I think this is the last time you'll hear from us this morning.
I was gonna say.
Again, appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you with this request. Uh, as you know, we have, uh, some residences that, uh, that we, uh, own and maintain for, uh, for use by our park rangers. We received, uh, two residences, uh, I guess I can't even tell you the year here. Two thousand seventeen, off, uh, when we, uh, started the Tedesco Environmental Learning Project, Learning Corridor project. And, uh, those were, as you know, in, in kind of varying states of, of repair. And we've made some, uh, significant investments in those to date, uh, as far as repairs. So, um, it's time to make some kind of continued repairs on, on one of those residences. And, um, we've done some work in-house to, uh, try to minimize what we need to contract out recognize that a carpentry isn't our, our number one forte. And, um, two, uh, maybe isn't the, the most efficient way to, to use staff time. So, um, with that, um, Ryan's been coordinating repair, um, uh, this residence and we'll describe what we're asking for. I will note, I guess, before I, sorry, Ryan, I'm just gonna keep having your reach for it. I'm, the conservation board did consider this last night and, uh, did approve it, uh, for recommendation to the board of supervisors. And also there's a note as far as fiscally that, um, we will see if we can absorb this into the FY budget. If we cannot, when we do last amendment, then we would, um, request that it be included in the amendment. But at the moment, we're, we're hoping that we can absorb it in the budget.
Yeah, so, uh, this residence had a greenhouse attached to the side of it. Uh, the greenhouse was very old and dilapidated, uh, had mold, um, all over inside of it. And then also there was a lot of I guess, critter holes into the side of the residence. So we removed that. Backfilled the lower portion of that greenhouse as it was recessed into the ground partially. Filled in all the holes that we could and then patched up the side of the house as well as we could. This was roughly a couple of years ago during the pandemic, uh, getting contractors in and finding, uh, siding materials match. This has been exhausting. We did compete this project. We did, uh, find the materials needed to, uh, make the full repairs um, that you'll see outlined here. So there's roughly nineteen hundred dollars in material costs and forty-nine hundred dollars in labor costs with this. So we believe we have the rest of the materials in-house to make the full, to have the contractor make the full repairs. So total, it would be around sixty-eight hundred dollars.
And what have we spent to date before this, on this house? Do you have any idea?
I'd hesitate to throw a number out. I know we did carpet. At this residence, we, uh, did carpet replacement. I'd hesitate to throw a number out. I know we did carpet. At this residence, we uh, did carpet replacement. Um, and we had to paint, paint the whole house on the interior. Um, I, I don't believe we had any other major expenses at this residence to date.
No, I think Ryan's right. Most of our expenses have been at residence. We did have some electrical work that we needed to do at this residence, this particular one as well. Uh, a lot of the, not a lot, some of the electrical system was, was done by the previous landowner that just didn't meet code. Um, so we've had to do a little bit of, of that. Um, but really, the, the, the building is, is uh, relatively new in the, in the big, big scheme, I guess. Um, I think it was built in the eighties. Um, and uh, is pretty efficient as far as energy use. Um, has a wood stove in it and, and um, you know, gets some solar gain as well in the winter. So uh, I think it's, it's, it's generally put together well. Um, but there have been a few, and again, mostly electrical things that we've had to do. And then normal wear and tear like carpet, like Ryan said.
Any additional, like, large expenses coming down? I find, I guess, are you foreseeing?
We, I guess we don't have any more on our radar right now. Um, particularly at this one. Um,
There's none.
We just don't, we
Yeah, there's none in the F Y twenty-four requests that we're working on.
So, yeah, no. So we're, we're not gonna be making any more uh, immediate asks for this.
Thanks. I, I feel like we talked about both of, both of the houses when we were budgeting uh, um, last year. What? What did, what? Was this on the radar when we were working on the budget last year? I, it feels like we talked about it then and made the decision to work on the other house. Am I remembering that correctly?
Um, yeah, I don't believe we talked about this, this need. I think at that point, we were still hoping that we could do this in-house.
Okay.
Um, get some materials and get it done in-house. And as Ryan said, that just proved difficult at best for us to do. So I know, I don't believe we had this discussion then.
For a motion?
Looks like. Uh, I move approval of a board of contract to Butch's Construction for repairs at twenty-eight oh nine South Riverside Drive, Park Ranger Residence with funds planned to be coming from, or absorbed from the conservation budget.
Second. Moved in seconded, Ted, and I, Merkin.
I.
Basil, I. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have consideration of changing source of funding for Stepping Stones Child Development Center from ARPA Revenue Loss Funds Expenditure Category to Unassigned General Fund Dollars.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry. Um, as you well know, Stepping Stones Child Care Center is a new child, child um, care center, development center proposed to be built um, in City of Slater. Uh, you've had several discussions with the, the owner and, and um, developer of the property. Despite um, her best efforts, there's been a number of issues that have um, come up with the sources of funding outside of the county funding that was approved. Um, fifty thousand dollars was approved from the Story County Board of Supervisors to Stepping Stones um, through the use of ARPA funding. Um, unfortunately, much to her dismay, she's not been successful in getting the SAM.gov registration. We all know those concerns. Um, fortunately, those are starting to rectify themselves, but not in this particular instance. Um, she's been, um, she is in need of having the funding in her account so that she can qualify for the small business loan. And that is instrumental in bringing this project to fruition. And without having the SAM.gov verification, she actually cannot receive any of the county funding. Um, so with that, I'm actually here recommending that the source of funding for Stepping Stones not be ARPA um, anymore and that be um, redesignated to unassigned general fund. Are there any questions?
I think your letter laid it out. They're still gonna meet the same criteria what line item it comes from.
Mm-hmm. And I appreciate the help you gave her on all of this too.
And thank you. And she has been very tenacious on it.
Mm-hmm.
And very um, keeping me in the loop of what's happening. It's not th- this is not a reflection of her in a, her not following through by any means. She has gone above and beyond.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any question.
Okay.
Yes.
And I would move changing the source of funding for the Stepping Stones, Stones Child Development Center from the ARPA Revenue Loss Funds Expenditure Category to Unassigned General Fund Dollars.
Second. Moved in seconded, Merkin.
I.
Edens.
I.
Basil, I. Thank you.
Thank you. I will let her know and then um, inform you, probably at the quarterly report time of ARPA too, just to keep that. And she's very well aware of doing reporting too.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, now we can move to departmental reports. We have engineers' quarterly report. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Darren.
Hi, Darren.
Okay, well, start out on the maintenance work update side of things. Uh, the mostly dry summer has allowed us to get quite a bit of road maintenance work done. We had a couple floods earlier in the year, but uh, didn't slow us down too much. Um, so along with our normal culvert replacements and ditch cleaning work, we were able to complete a few gravel road regrade projects. Been a few years since we've found the time to do those. That's where the gravel roads get pushed out and the ditches get filled in and it gets too wide to really maintain with the mortar grader. So we bring it all back up and build the road up. So we did that on South S Avenue, uh, Nineteenth Street and three hundred and ten street down by Huxley, uh, did all those, three of those in about the past month. Um, we'll also continue to work on some bridge repairs and erosion control projects until it freezes. And we've started prepping our equipment for uh, winter along with our salt sand stockpiles. Uh, construction project updates. We had eleven projects this construction season. Most of them are completed. R thirty-eight, I'll touch on a little bit here. Um, S twenty-seven was done earlier in the year. Sherman twelve bridge, um, that one is kind of falling victim to the supply chain issues. It's a precast box. And it's uh, not available till next week. Finally, it's been delayed a couple of months because of that. Um, it's getting a little late in the year and we hate to do these in harvest season, but we don't have much choice and uh, but hopefully they'll get to work on that in a week or so. Um, Colin seventy, Indian Creek eleven and Washington twenty-four all completed. The Lafayette five bridge replacement started this week. Um, the box is in, so hopefully uh, they'll get that installed this week and completed this week. Uh, the next three bridges are all completed. The last one, Nevada twenty-four bridge deck, that's gone through a couple of different. Uh, the pricing came in too high for a full deck replacement for the age of the rest of the bridge. So we switched it to some deck patching. Um, and then we got into the patching far enough to realize uh, the deck was a little bit too far gone to even invest that much money into it. So we'll come up with some other options on that and we can talk about that in the five-year program discussion. That's the one around the Hickory Grove Lake at the um, on the west side of the lake there. Uh, moving on to construction project design, um, not much change on the Thirteenth Street Rise Grant paving. Um, I will comment when we get into the federal aid programs that are coming out. This may be a project that might rise to the top um, on additional funding sources and might give us a little more time to do something with that, but I'll get to that a little bit later. Um, we're continuing to work with Maxwell to apply for funds uh, through the city bridge program, the D O T and I the city finally replied to me and did submit the application. Uh, we pretty much made all the forms for them. All I had to do is uh, get it submitted and they did that. So we are on the list, may not qualify the first go around, but we're hoping um, by the next one, we'll get enough points to qualify for some special funding on that. Uh, back to the R thirty-eight construction, uh, that's a pretty big project for us. Um, the asphalt work was completed and the shoulder rock done on September thirtieth. Um, so essentially it's back open to traffic and the work is done. The pavement markings have been a bit of an issue throughout the project and they continue. Um, get to that last. We did widen out the asphalt at all the gravel road intersections, additional ten feet. That'll kind of keep the rock from getting out on the uh, bike path portion, which is a continual maintenance issue for us. And it also helps us maintain the road. We don't have to get the mortar grader quite so far out into the busy R thirty-eight traffic uh, to touch up the intersection. So uh, does a couple of good things for us there. Um, again, it's such a large project, lasts about a month. Traffic was impacted, especially with the D O T work and the closure over on E fifty-seven. Um, so I appreciate patience of the residents in the area. Um, lastly, back to the, the paint issue, um, we closed the bike lanes during construction, uh, because one, um, we didn't want the bikes getting caught in the pilot car situation. Um, and with the paint shortage we have right now, we didn't want to put temporary lines down for the the bike path paint. Um, the contractor messed up and started putting it down anyway after the first lift of asphalt. So we decided just to go ahead and continue with it, but then they, they put it in the wrong spot. It's, there's five-foot bike lanes out there. One side they painted it six feet, the other side they painted it three feet. Um, we knew those are just temporary lines, so it wasn't that big a deal. But uh, last week they were gonna start the final, which are milled in, so they're a little more important. We mill it in and set it down a little bit so the plows don't uh, take off the paint so easy and they last much longer. Anyway, we warned them, we wanted to be on site because we know the issues we had prior, um, before they started. So um, they called us and said they were gonna be getting, by the time we got down there, they'd already started putting it down and they messed it up again on the final lift, which is very disappointing. Um, this project's pretty important to me. It's kind of the finishing touch on a fifteen-year. I, I designed that entire eight mile stretch. It used to be one of more dangerous roads in the county and now it's one of the, the safest. And this was, we couldn't afford uh, the thickness of asphalt when we originally did the reconstruction because it got really expensive. So this is kind of the finishing touch on that whole project. So I wanted to look nice, but uh, but the only thing they could do is it's on the southbound portion come out of Ames. It's about three miles. They put it at six feet instead of five. So it has to come off. So they had the water blast it off and that does damage the pavement a little bit. You'll see a scar about eight inches wide all the way down there. Just so you know what that is, it's pretty unfortunate, but I don't know why they couldn't get it right, but um, contractors are having a hard time finding employees, I know, and we're, I'll get to that in another project. Issue we had last week as well, same issues that they just don't know what they're doing, um, fortunately. We got it, we got them stopped anyways. So the rest of the project, the other side, they were off enough. We did some adjustments. And we were able to figure out how to get it done right without having to blast it off. But the one side, you'll see a scar on unfortunately, but uh, they milled that, that side uh, for paint yesterday and hopefully in the next couple of days, they said they'll get it uh, painted in the milled area. So we'll be finally done with the bike path and we'll be completely done with that project.
The scar is just, it's cosmetic.
Yeah, but it takes some of the asphalt off the top too as well. So i- it's rougher and they say it'll heal itself over years, time period, but uh, we'll have to monitor that to see if it causes future damage. So before we sign off on the final project, we might do some negotiating, kind of some sort of warranty or something that if we do have issues with that, um, they're, they should be held responsible for that.
That's a good idea, particularly since they're so culpable for this damage.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, E fifty-seven culvert project, that's the project we need to bore new culvert under the road right where the D O T has it closed. Uh, we were waiting for the bore contractor from the D O T project to get done and that's what took so long on the D O T's project and that's still going on. Um, so they did get the bore complete last week on the D O T under sixty-nine, but then the contractor was so delayed on other projects, they moved out. So we hope to see him back in a couple of weeks. Um, that's what they telling, telling us now. Um, our contract maintenance projects throughout the year, we did our contract rock hauling. That was early in the year. That's completed. Uh, the asphalt crack ceiling was completed midsummer. Bridge deck hatching, that's where we get into uh, some of those issues we had last week again. Um, this one was very concerning. We had two separate contractors in. Um, one, they did the Cameron School Road, a bridge patching first. That took uh, about two weeks to get completed. Um, and then that contractor moved on to S twenty-seven right now. So they're currently working on some deck patching on S twenty-seven. And then they will be complete. Now, the bridge deck patching on the Hickory Grove Bridge, I touched on that one a little bit earlier. We got into that one enough where we kind of put a halt to that and we'll, we can discuss that later, but uh, we'll come up some different options for that. The R thirty-eight north is the one we had the big issues on last week. Um, that's about a mile north of Ames on R thirty-eight. They came in and sawed it and they saw it square to jackhammer those areas out to patch them. And they saw it too deep and got into the steel and that is a very bad thing to do. Um, so it was a one to two-day project originally and planned to be open that night. Um, but going into that steel, it, it had to be repaired and we knew we couldn't open the road back up like was originally planned. So we had to scramble and get some traffic lights out there so we could have those up overnight. We don't, we rarely do overnight closures on our projects with stoplights or stop signs. Fortunately, we were able to find some quickly at Iowa Plains, so they brought those up right away. Um, and then the other issues, the steel had to be replaced, jackhammered out and replaced and finding that steel, uh, we were able to find it. Des Moines, the contractor couldn't find it right away, so that was a concern, but we did locate some in Des Moines. Um, so we got the road, uh, the lights up and so I had to go all weekend with the lights up overnight. And then Monday they were able to get the new steel and then patch it up. Um, so crisis averted that uh, was very concerning at first. It could have been a very serious problem and one of my worst nightmares, a bridge issue on a paved road. It, if they do something that is not repairable, you're talking probably a minimum of two years to get a new bridge in there. So that would have been a, a very bad deal. Um, then lastly, they finally got to the final part where they pour the new concrete in. We had to use some uh, different type of concrete because it was a larger repair they ended up with. They were a couple of feet into the pour before we realized they brought out the wrong concrete. So they had to dig the concrete, wet concrete back out and spray it all back out and that was just one thing after another on that project. But that's why I missed a couple meetings last week, Waterset meeting and the uh, the pipeline meeting because I had to be out there for two days straight, what, making sure that got repaired properly. Um, and then just to go back, the other contract that started S twenty-seven, that's a similar bridge. So we were concerned about the same thing happening down there. But these are the same issues we're having with contractors. We told them, do not start until we're there. So that was supposed to start yesterday on Monday. Got some calls from farmers on Friday, said they're out here saw cutting the bridge without signs or anything. It's just stuff like that just keeps happening and it's very frustrating, but it's hard to find contracts to even do the work, but then they, they don't let you know what's going on.
Supervise them.
Yes, it's inspections especially important right now. Um, this, so the deck patching is nearly completed. Um, pavement markings. Again, a delay due to paint shortage. We knew the shortage was there last year, so we tried something different this year. We went out straight to the paint vendor and wanted to buy the paint directly. So we secure that and then we could, we have two local contractors that can spray it. And they were willing to work with us on doing that. The paint vendor twice told us it was gonna be delayed a couple of weeks this summer and eventually this, I think in August, they finally said, sorry, you're not gonna get it at all. So that was very frustrating. So we have a couple of roads that really need the paint. So we were able to find one local vendor that had a little bit of paint left. So they're gonna hopefully touch those up here in the next couple of weeks uh, before it gets too cold. Um, That original paint vendor has, did deliver, we ordered, uh, I think twelve totes of paint. Uh, they delivered five last week, all white paint. The yellow center line is what's more important, so that's what everybody's looking for. We're still in order to get that, it, it'll store for a year in warm temperatures, so we have it up in our heated shed right now. And we hope to get the yellow paint in the next couple of months and we'll have it in the spring, ready to go. Um, but we got some roads out there that really, really need some paint. Uh, Country Club Culvert Liner, that took me a year, but we finally got that done uh about a month ago. And then lastly, Denko does a lot of uh bridge and culvert repairs for us. Um, they do a really good job with those. Unfortunately, Denko was the one that did deck patching as well, that cut into the deck, but uh. Once they did that, they, they worked this very well to get the issue resolved, but uh. So that's it for contract maintenance this year. FY twenty two budgets, as you know, we had a lot of carryover items um into FY twenty three from the prior year. Due to a lot of uh, the trucks, three hundred fifty thousand dollars in trucks were delayed. Um, a lot of deck patching, culvert repairs and pavement markings, all that work was delayed for some of the reasons we just talked about. And then, the big one was the locally funded uh contract construction work, about a seven hundred fifty thousand. We're gonna pay with that bond money we had instead of our local funds, so that's gonna uh inflate our carryover balance some. But uh, a lot of that will be brought down with the motor grader uh lease purchase here that we'll talk about uh coming up here. The six hundred eightieth avenue speed limit issue, uh, that's the one I talked to you about, where uh the property owner put up a uh. Speed limit sign without board approval. We put up our curb sign that we talked about with the speed advisory plate. And the homeowner did voluntarily take down their sign, so the issue appears to be resolved, so that's good news. Motor grader lease, um, CAT has indicated that they should be able to actually lock in some price quotes soon. Both for the new motor graders and our trade-ins, we weren't sure if they'd be able to do that a year out. We'll have to see what the trade-in values come in at and whether we wanna exercise those or not, but. But hopefully soon I'll have some actual numbers I can bring to the board, so we can start that discussion. And if we do, where do we buy out our current motor graders, um, which we kind of have to do either way. We'll own them for a couple of months, but that, that'll push the timeframe back a couple of months and then this will kind of push. Our discussion on what we do into more into our budget season, so we can look at the entire budget to make the decision rather than. Uh, just focus on this one issue, so you look at more of the big picture on that. Um, dump truck orders, we did finally receive our single axle truck that was ordered in February of twenty twenty one. Um, and the mechanic service truck, um, that was budgeted last FY, just came in last week. We have another Tana Max, that's currently on order that we probably won't see till FY twenty four. And we're currently, current budget year, we have a uh signed truck that we're having a difficult time finding a chassis for, but. Um, one dealer did have a couple pop up and we're looking into right now, maybe we'll be able to. We act quick enough, maybe get on those, but they don't even have pricing on it yet, so we're waiting for that. That takes us to the federal transportation bill. So there's two parts to that, is the one is the, the distribution formula money, and that's kind of the programs we currently have in place. Um, July twelfth, the DOT um settled the amounts that the cities, counties and the DOT would get. What they kind of agreed on is everybody would get a similar percentage increase, so across the board, there was really no change in uh the percentage increase, so. The actual numbers, we'll, I'll be able to give you those when we talk in the five-year program discussion this winter. The other part of the program is the grant side, that gets a lot more complicated, um. The formula money is guaranteed where the grants you have to apply for. We did uh apply for the SS four A, which is the safety grant program. Uh, we got that application in on time, so through that we should see a, what they call an action plan, a safety action plan. You have to have that safety action plan to apply for actual project funding next year, so we hope to get that grant. Um, we also applied for the bridge program as well, that's a. Um, a grant we already had ready, County Engineers Association, it was eight bridges in the state, uh, Story County did not have one of those. Um, at this time, but we'll see if we get uh that grant this year. If we do, they'll be looking for new bridges for next year. And hopefully get a story county bridge in there. Um, we did have a. At a meeting I was at last week, there was a federal highway um employee there that. Brought up an additional concern with these grant programs. I talked to the board a little bit about. A lot of these have really high minimum dollar amounts. The safety one is the lowest, I think. I think that's a five million dollar minimum. We don't do very many five million dollar projects as a county, so that's why we're pooling our, uh, all the counties together to apply for these. But as I mentioned, one county has to come up with all that money upfront and it's a reimbursement program, so. That's enough of a concern alone, but this person brought up an additional concern. For some reason, in the bill, they put something in there where the DOT cannot assist the counties at all. And the issue with that is the DOT has processes set up for environmental reviews and letting processes and all that stuff. They can't do anything for us, so the county has to do all that. So the end result is the federal government has come and audit the county to make sure all those processes are in place. And that's very concerning, because we don't, we rely on the DOT to do that for us now, so we don't have those processes. And so one county is gonna have to put up all that money and then as working with the federal government, if you know enough, if you do one thing wrong. They won't give you any of that money, so you're on the hook for all that, so that. He's concerned on how they're gonna be able to even audit counties. That part's an additional concern that we hadn't even thought about yet. Uh, so these grant pro- program or programs are getting more complicated by the day. The County Engineers Association went out and surveyed all the counties for next year, looking to, to start building some of the. Uh, bridges and road projects to get in the next year's grant. I put in some of the, just brainstorming some of the things I thought might qualify. There's not much. They're focusing on these freight corridors and that's another thing we found out last week is. You were gonna have to justify it being on a, a high freight route, but there is actual maps that have great freight corridors. And we don't have anything on um the freight corridor map, so that will not be a bonus for us. And secondly, the disadvantage, the underserved census tracks, the other thing they're focusing on. And we don't have any of those either. Um, there isn't a, a track in the RPA region. So the eight county region in central Iowa has none of those. There are two in Des Moines and two in Ames, but those are within the city limits. Um, so we're not gonna qualify very high on those. Uh, you can see kind of a list of some of the projects that I put together that meet some of their, um, what they're looking for. And that's where, under roads, the two hundred twentieth street for the ethanol plant, they're looking for projects close to renewable energy. Sources, projects, so that might rank fairly high, but again, that's gonna have to be lumped with some other counties to meet the minimum. Of miles. The bridges, um, I did, I put in E fifteen because we just approved that emergency I thirty five detour route. Which is on that uh section, so that might make that rank a little higher. Uh, five ninetieth avenue bridge is close to the ethanol plant out here as well. And then the one I'd really like to get funded is a hundred fiftieth Gump River Bridge. And the only thing I could really come up with on that one is it's close to a recreational area and canoe access, so gonna try to. Promote it that way.
Darren.
Yes.
The DOT distribution formulas.
Yeah.
Um, are, do those have the same spending deadlines as American Rescue funding?
No, those are just, they're, they're more of an account balance for, so the money just goes directly in there and then they have some. You have to get it spent within like three years or something, but yeah.
Okay.
It's not an application process at all. It's, it's more of an account that gets money put right into it, so those are easy.
Thanks.
Uh, the twenty two legislation that was passed in Iowa, just wanted to update on a couple of those items, the all-terrain vehicle. Um, I didn't necessarily have a big problem with that bill, but it did have concerns and those concerns are kind of coming true, unfortunately. We had a fatality. In the first month, um, that they were allowed to use the roads and I did hear of another one just this week in Benton County, there's. Uh, multiple fatality ATV accident there, so that's concerning. I think they were both due to dusty roads and they just couldn't see. And then we have seen a little bit of increase in gravel road damage. Unfortunately, they like to do donuts at gravel road intersections and they really dig into the road. Um, we used to see that somewhat, but it's kind of increased now, but uh. Hopefully that doesn't increase. The other bill was the all systems permit for heavier loads. This is a, a bill we have to come into compliance with by twenty twenty five and we're talking with the DOT on how that's even possible. What, what it will require is all of our bridges to be rerated, because they increased the loading by twelve percent. If they wouldn't have done that, it wouldn't have been so difficult, but they increased the load amount by twelve percent and our bridges aren't rated for that, so we have to rate them all. And get them into a automatic rating system in order to be in this all systems permit, so. We're working with the DOT to see how that can be done, and I think the DOT is looking for possible funding sources on how we can get our bridges rated, but uh. That's a continuing discussion. City of Ames Construction, um, they had five eightieth uh closed for nearly a year, south of Lincoln Way. Then they recently got that back open finally. Um, this closure added quite a bit of additional traffic. One mile over on five ninetieth, it's a gravel road that has that five ninetieth wood bridge on it. Twice we were actually out there. Once my maintenance superintendent, it's been on our list to do some bridge repairs, had some piling issues. Uh, so we couldn't really close it until they got five eightieth open, but while we're out there looking at it. Uh, it, it's only rated for eighty thousand pounds now. He was underneath it when like a hundred and forty thousand pound crane drove over it. He thought the bridge was coming down on top of him while he was under there. Um, and then, once five eightieth got open, we started the bridge repairs and actually closed the road. And a two hundred and forty thousand pound load came down the road and we're out there working on the bridge, we're able to get it stopped. Um, and they didn't have a proper permit even to go on our road, so we made them wait and we tried to get a hold of the. Um, the DOT enforcement and they were at a conference that day or something, so unfortunately there's nothing we can do about it. Um, so that's frustrating, but um, that road is getting so much traffic and they're ignoring our loadings and. Uh, damaging the bridge. Um, that's also additional concerning, because Ames has now indicated they plan to close the next mile of Lincoln Highway. Here in the next month or so for another long time period. So you won't even be able to get to five eightieth, so a lot more traffic's gonna be, one, cutting on five ninetieth. And two, using thirteenth street gravel road to get over to Ames, so that's really gonna increase our gravel road traffic unfortunately.
But Darren, you said there was a crane that went over the bridge the first time, when you guys.
It was on a semi trailer, but it was.
Who was pulling that? Who was that? Who belonged? Who did that belong to?
It's all going to the Verbiel constructions, where all, this is all going, um. And there's just, the first one we caught and we talked to permitting people and they said they just screwed up. Um, and then the second one, they didn't have a permit. The first one had the wrong road on it. And the driver went down the wrong road. The second one, they didn't have a county permit, so. That's something the DOT enforcement helps us on, but they just weren't available that day, and if they don't witness it in person, they can't do anything about it. But it's a pretty heavy fine if they actually catch them.
And, and the second load that it didn't go over the bridge because.
Oh, you got that one stopped. That one might have went through it.
That one was going to Verbiel also.
Yeah. Yep, they're doing a lot of building out there, which requires some cranes and stuff, so that's where they're all headed.
Thanks.
Question?
Maybe for later. I'm just trying to think if it's worth the conversation with.
Yeah, I think, I, that's what I was saying, thinking about. Maybe we should talk to them and say, do you realize this is happening?
They probably aren't even aware of it, because they're all contractors and, and the contracts have permitting agents, so it's even a third party.
Right.
So. Yeah, it's concerning and. The five ninetieth bridge, it's getting really beat up. Uh, it's a wood bridge and the planks are starting to get gaps in them, then the rock falls through. So we thought we were gonna catch a break here and have a chance to get all the traffic off, and now it's gonna be right back to similar, maybe even worse condition.
Really, um, scary signage we could put up.
Yeah.
It is, it's load posted bridge, so it's got posting signs on it. Some bridges aren't load posted.
We, we mean it, you're taking your life in your own hands. I mean, seriously, that people would do that.
Yeah, they just, a lot of people ignore load posting signs.
Yeah.
There, there's a bridge we're gonna be talking about here this winter. Closing, I have to inspect it myself every three months, because it's load posted so low. I was just under it yesterday. And while I'm under it, a, a load went over that with this, a combine on a trailer that no way should have been going over that one either. Loading gets ignored a lot, unfortunately, and if they don't go through the bridge, they're damaging the bridge, but they don't realize it. And it's usually the next person down the road that, that's what happened when the wind farm was built. A crane went over it and damaged the bridge, and the next person that came along is the one that hit the hole in the bridge, so. Um, anyway, got my soapbox there. Um, the, the other Ames project, they are currently have the railroad crossing at North Dakota closed. Um, at the north part of Ames. Think that's for three to four weeks. Um, they do have a signed detour in place and, but it is gonna cause a lot of additional traffic. We have one gravel road that connects two hundred fifteenth street to one mile gravel road, it's gonna get a lot of additional traffic. There's a row of houses that currently have dust control. Uh, they have called already complaining about the extra traffic and wanting more dust. We do relay those to the project owner, which is the city of Ames. Um, but we are getting into a period here in October where even our dust control, we're starting to blade through and prep the road for winter. We don't put dust control down in the winter, so hopefully their dust control lasts a little longer, because we don't like to put it down this late in the year. Can make a, a muddy mess out of the road. Once it starts snowing and everything, it attracts the moisture, makes a mess out of the road.
But you said the city is putting down.
No, I haven't heard if they would want to or not. Um, the city would have to do that voluntarily. Um, so we have them call the city directly and, um, that's what happens when the DOT does their projects. We tell the DOT upfront to get the dust control down, but they always wait for the complaints, so we're like, we'll afford them to you. That's what's happening down at E fifty seven. I'll get to that DOT next. Uh, that's the one, they're gonna uh hopefully get that project open next week, or actually, could it even be this week? That will relieve the pressure on the gravel roads we have in that area around highway sixty ninety fifty seven. The DOT has put down dust control twice, uh, which is appreciated, but it was very necessary. Um, but the roads were getting hard to even maintain with the dry conditions and washboarding with so much traffic on them, but uh. So the pipe bore issue was resolved under sixty nine and the payments went down, so I think they're just getting the paint and traffic control set up. To get that back open, so that's good news. Um, we did beat them, getting done with our R thirty eight project. We had a lot of comments, they wanted us to look, delay ours, but we could tell theirs was gonna take so long. Um, we couldn't have got ours done if we waited for theirs to get done in time for winter. Uh, the DOT is also gonna be starting a highway thirty payment reconstruction project next year, um, east in Nevada on this. About S twenty seven over to Colo, that will require the closure of a lot of the eastbound lanes, so that'll. Require the closure of the gravel road connections that come into it. So we're working with the DOT on those closures and possibly dust control again. Then lastly, the DOT is uh also scheduled to start the S fourteen bridge. They have already started that, I see. They've got some driveways built and some dirt moving already. And then the highway thirty and five eightieth interchange project next year as well, and I think some of that's. And then the highway thirty and five eightieth interchange project next year as well. And I think some of that's to start it as well. I will comment, I did look at the five year program for the DOT and they did put in the Nevada interchange, some work on that in the fifth year out. So we weren't sure if that was going to make the program or not, but that would be the airport road interchange. Uh, we'll start some work, uh, or at least some right away purchase within the five years.
And the highway thirty pavement reconstruction, they have to close down the entire eastbound?
Yeah, they'll probably do crossover and have head to head on the westbound side. Uh, lastly, job openings, we were able to fill our design engineer position and the engineering technician position in-house. That's working out very well. And at this point, we have the one position still open, the lead technician, we're going to hold off on for now. Kind of look at that again in the spring. There aren't a lot of good candidates out there right now anyway. So it's another reason to hold off, but uh, we can get by through the winter, especially with a little bit less staff. And so we're good right now. Finally, fully staffed again.
This is just a quarterly report. You, this has been a busy, busy summer for you.
Yeah.
Now you said, I think the last time we talked or a time or two ago, that was taking you a year to get a box culvert. I assume that you got that one quicker.
Yeah, we do have a, a bridge let, S fourteen bridge gets let in November and that's a beam bridge and that there's a real shortage of beams as well, but we're, that's why we got to let November. We're trying to get in, in the hopper early. That one is the next concerning one. If we'll get those beams in time, but uh, yeah, the boxes, the rest came in fairly good. I don't know why this one was delayed so much, um, but uh, that's continuing issue on just supply shortage everywhere on everything it seems like right now. Any other questions?
I don't. Thank you for the thorough report and I agree with Linda. This is only a quarterly report.
Yeah.
You've been busy and your staff have been busy. Thank you.
Yeah, hopefully in my January report, I'll kind of do a year end. I'll have a lot of pictures to show you of some of the work we've done with maintenance. We got quite a bit done this year. So.
It's good work. Thank you, Darren.
Tell your team thanks for us too. Yeah. And moving on to other reports, update of story counting quarterly financial report. Hello again.
Hello.
First quarter's over. Where did that go?
Really?
So.
The report shows that there are nine departments um, on the expense side that are over the twenty five percent. As you can see, most of them are just slightly over it. So um, we're, we're looking pretty good there. Um, overall though, we're only sixteen percent of our budget being used. A lot of that has to do with only two percent of the ARP funds being spent because we're seventeen million budgeted there. Um, for how, where the fund balances are, um, right now we've spent twenty percent of our general fund. Um, twenty seven percent of our supplemental fund, thirteen percent of our rural fund, twenty one percent of our secondary roads fund, two percent of our ARPA fund. Just a side note, I did, um, this is the eleventh of the month. The ARPA quarterly report was posted this morning. I did not have to yell at anybody. I didn't have to. They were, the reporting still sucks. However, I was able to do it without any, um, lost sleep.
Yay.
Um, so it is filed, um, and it's on the S drive. Okay. So you, you can review it. It's totally worthless as far as I'm concerned because it, it, it doesn't even look like what it should look like. We, I did put also in the quarterly reporting, uh, download of an Excel spreadsheet, which will actually tell you amounts, total amounts. Um, we spent one point two million of, of the ARPA dollars. Um, revenues, nine departments again are over twenty five percent. But overall we're at forty eight percent. So tax, tax payments are coming in. Um, we're right at, right, a little below forty, forty nine percent when I posted September for tax payments. So um, at this point in time, we're still, I'm still looking at an unassigned um, general fund balance of about two point five million. So um, I didn't, didn't re redo the ending fund balance projections at this point in time. We're just running about two point five million right now. So. Do you have any questions?
Lisa, what is the MHDS services? You had first quarter, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Is that what you just had left over or what?
MHDS?
Yes. It's revenues.
Oh.
Oh, it's under revenue?
The revenue.
Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah. Yes. Um, that's the revenue and that is, so when we originally put this budget together, we didn't know how much money was going to be, we didn't know how the, how the, um, transition would work.
Right, right.
So we put four hundred and fifty thousand dollars as an expense and four hundred and forty three thousand dollars as a revenue. Well, those, I'm going to have to amend those way down when it comes amendment time. We're getting, um, two hundred, well, we're getting five hundred dollars a month from CICS.
Oh, is that for?
Two fifty is for the building, two fifty is for the, the.
Fiscal agent.
For, for the, um, no, two fifty is for the use of, um, uh, cop, yeah. Office, office. Okay.
So that's going to be ongoing revenue.
So right now I'm putting, um, I'm depositing two hundred and fifty dollars a month into the HSC line item, the human services center line item. And two fifty a month into MHDS services.
Gotcha.
That contract they signed included some of the services, but not all of them, like phone and things like that. She's also, they're also paying for um, shredding and copier and those type of things out of the local fund here. And then going to bill out the, the region for that.
Gotcha. Okay.
Um, it's kind of a work in progress right now as to how this is all
Sure.
fall, falling or working out, but, but yes, that is what that is.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks.
Certainly. I'll go back to mail.
Any upcoming agenda items?
I might put a consideration on the drainage district proposal association on the next. We want to discuss that.
And now it's time for public comment. Number two comments, um, from the public on items not on this agenda, board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. I think no one will close public comment number two. And move on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Markin, you want to start?
Well, I had several meetings this last week. Um, we went out to look at some drainage district, um, issues on grant five, which was, um, very illuminating. Um, also, um, have done some webinars on some of the federal broadband money and did meet with Melissa at, uh, with Emily from Feaster's office and various other meetings. And I don't know that I have that much. Let me see what I've got coming up this week. Let's see. We're going to do the ARPA check presentations this afternoon, leadership Nevada tomorrow morning. Got a story county transportation collaboration meeting, uh, also tomorrow. And then Thursday already is our economic development group summit, isn't it? That, looking forward to that. Um, Friday at four o'clock, I wanted to let everybody know this, uh, James Peace, who's on the conservation board is getting a national heritage foundation award at four o'clock. And I think it's a conservation. I'll check and see where that is and let you know. And I don't think there's anything I have on Monday for next week. Oh yeah, we have ARPA work session on Monday. So.
I guess that, that on my calendar, what time?
One o'clock to seventeenth. Is that right, Leanne?
I don't have anything on my calendar.
Maybe it's a hold. Do we have that?
I, I mean, I sent it a week. I was not feeling well. I missed it.
It is on then. Okay.
What time is that?
One.
Oh, okay. I had another meeting though.
I do too.
You had a, you had a meeting too?
Yeah.
Did you have ARPA on your calendar or no?
Yeah.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, but I, I thought it doesn't matter. Yeah. It's on, it's on my calendar. I just wasn't sure if it was, it doesn't matter. We can talk about it later.
You, you sent it as an invite, Leanne? Huh, it's not on mine. That's that's right. So oh, that's why. Yeah, that's why I made other meeting plans that day, not knowing. So. So I have, I have the same meetings on my schedule, the, the ARPA thing this afternoon, the leadership Nevada, and then I have a personal appointment tomorrow morning, SEDG. Very kind of economic development summit. Um, I had the Jim Peace reception. Um, I had a heretical connections meeting next Sunday and I was going to meet with the new workforce development Monday afternoon, but I'll see if I can change that.
See, um, so my work with Central Iowa Housing Authority, um, we're working on um, the new strategic plan for Serha and looking for a new executive director of the longtime executive director announced her retirement. So we've had a lot of extra meetings on that work. And also, um, been having a lot of extra meetings for boost, just trying to organize different subcommittees. And with, um, story county uh, college access network, there've been a lot of extra, extra meetings for all the boards that I'm on right now. Exploring strive together network and, and what that could potentially look like moving forward. This, the rest of this week, um, I have all this, all the same meetings. Um, we have leadership Nevada tomorrow. I will be here throughout the day. Then I am meeting with, uh, the alternatives coordinator on Friday. I've got D cap Friday afternoon. I also have, um, Jim Pease's reception. Um, it's at conservation.
Yeah, I just found it.
Tonight, uh, the county attorney is receiving a, an outstanding alumni award from DMAC. So I'm going to be going to that award ceremony this evening. And then, um, our go work session on Monday. Anything further?
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Jen seconded, heading by, Markin.
I.
Faisal, I, we are adjourned. Thank you.